Good evening and welcome to the December twenty first meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. I'll start by reading a script for remote select board participation. I am Select Board Chair Tom LaCusa. And I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange?
Here.
Steve Morantz?
Here.
Richard Foster? Mark Gold?
Here.
Richard, are you muted or?
He's connecting still.
Harry, I see him. He's just, uh... He's waiting to connect. Uh, so we'll get back to him. And then, um, for staff, please respond to your names. Lynn Simons?
Here.
Paul Pasturzic?
Here.
Deb House?
Here.
Uh, Chief Dearborn?
Here.
Okay. And... We're still, Richard is still connecting to the audio. Uh, he must have a weak connection. So we'll just check him in. Um, so this open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, they've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirements of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as a reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening via telephone conference, video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Resident comments, after the announcement of COVID nineteen update in the general announcements, I will afford public comment as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify, uh, themselves with their names and their addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to share your screen or your computer because anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. First item on the agenda, before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a call with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And we will start with an update on COVID nineteen status. Uh, Chief John Dearborn is with us. Uh, Chief, would you like to take over?
Uh, good evening. Uh, can anybody hear me all right? All right, excellent. So it's been a pretty busy two weeks for our COVID team. Um, our cases have increased. Um, we're still rolling a little bit behind the regional curve. Um, so kind of a couple of numbers that hopefully, uh, you guys or folks have gotten used to listening to is our fourteen day case count. So for, uh, December eighteenth, we're about a hundred and two cases. Uh, that was up from fifty-seven in the prior week. Uh, the number that I really look at, um, is the percent positivity. Um, and we went from two point seven three, um, to four point six oh percent. That's a pretty good jump. Um, it's concerning. Um, it was more concerning at that time because we get to that five percent, uh, that does change our color designation. Um, it's a formula, but the percent positivity is a primary driver on it. Um, and if we go to five, we'll go to the red. Um, this week, we've been averaging right around sixty cases, active cases per day. We go up and down, as I've explained before. Uh, we had cases that come on, cases that go off. Mondays, we typically get a dump of cases. Today, we had fourteen cases. New cases come on, but we had, uh, eight drop offs. So, um, that's kind of a typical day. Um, this number of cases requires a tremendous amount of contact tracing, close contact tracing. Um, so our COVID, um, Cheryl's been very busy. Um, she's been, um, working throughout the weekend providing updates. Um, and obviously, we're trying to support the school decision making with all of this. Uh, just give a couple of comparative numbers real quick. Handing County is currently running at an eight point five five level compared to our four, uh, states running at a six, uh, percent level. Um, both those went up, uh, were higher in the last week. Uh, we are seeing some of the communities around us that really spiked right after Thanksgiving, a little bit of a drop. Again, Monday nights are hard to report because we get a big case dump usually over the weekend. So, um, the question I've kind of gotten used to from you folks is, um, where are we seeing most of our cases? So, again, I'll emphasize this is a very different situation than we had in the spring. Most of our cases are, uh, single family homes, family spread. Um, we believe the root cause of that is gatherings, um, traveling cars with groups of people, having folks over your house they don't normally live with, um, or there are sports activities that have been impacting us. We're monitoring a couple of situations in long-term, uh, term care, group homes and elderly housing. Uh, we have a few spread which we anticipated. Um, we have a few sporadic cases in those. Um, uh, we're in touch with those folks every day, uh, on our situations. Fortunately for those facilities, they've learned a great deal during the spring and they have a lot of protective strategies. They also do their own testing, um, so they're able to get their arms around a situation much quicker than we were able to in the spring. But we're still providing a lot of assistance to them, um, in traffic cases. Um, I think that's about all I have for you. Um, certainly, uh, through the chair, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Yeah, Mark Gold has questions. Mark Gold?
I, I have a couple of questions. First one is, when you report positivity in Long Meadow, are those tests done in Long Meadow? Are those tests done anywhere on somebody who reports they're a Long Meadow resident?
Yeah, really, it goes back to their address, Mark. It could be done anywhere as long as, um, it gets into the state system that, um, it's, it's, it's married to the address of the zip code.
Okay, thanks. The other thing is, you know, with, with the rollout now of hopefully this vaccine, have you heard anything about our first responders or congregant housing vaccination?
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, what I've been living for last week or so. Um, so about first responders, first, um, there's about three different irons in the fire with that. Um, I'm, I'll be perfectly frank with all of you. Um, I've been incredibly frustrated. I would think with a year of development, we'd have all these plans, um, locked in binders and they'd be ready to go. Uh, that is not the case. Um, so we partnered with Bay State Hospital. We are an affiliate service to them. Um, the Fire Chiefs Association, Massachusetts has an initiative going on. And then we've actually looked at a couple of other partnering opportunities with the pharmacies. So I believe Bay State Hospital appears that they're going to step up. Um, we actually discussed running something locally to support more of a regional effort and I may come back to you folks at some point, uh, with that concept. But we're eagerly, eagerly awaiting that. Um, there have been a few hiccups, the amount of vaccine Massachusetts was supposed to receive. Um, it turns out it's going to be less than what we thought, so that's pushed a lot of the plans back. So, uh, for nursing homes, congregant housing, it appears that the pharmacies will be engaged in that. Uh, that's what I've been told so far. Uh, one of the things we're working on is, um, some of our folks that are not, you know, the elderly folks that are homebound. Um, we believe at this point that, uh, that we'll build pharmacies, we'll be providing, uh, at-home services, but we're really monitoring that. Um, pretty dynamic plans, um, but we're working on it every day. Uh, it's pretty much my full-time job at the moment, so.
Any other questions, Chief? And so Chief, the, the cost of all this extra work, um, is that going to become a burden for the town?
So right now, um, we, uh, now to the end of December, we have our CARES Act money, um, that is funding a lot of this extra work, also putting in for the FEMA reimbursements. Um, I am somewhat concerned about the CARES Act, if that, uh, and Paul can speak to this maybe a little bit. Um, if that actually does sunset, um, I did not see, and I spent some time reading the, um, the relief bill that came out of DC does not, at least in my mind, and Lynn and Paul, if you want to chime in here, it does not appear to have local aid built into it yet. Um, so that's really concerning for me. Um, and the FEMA reimbursements are getting, uh, we have three reimbursements in, uh, right now. We've received one, another one has been approved, third is in process. And each time we put them in, they've become more and more difficult and require more and more justification for stuff that may have been approved on the round one aspect. In round two, they're denying it, we're having to go back and fight the battle and it's getting worse as we go along. So, um, I am concerned, um, for us to drop off a lot of the initiatives that we're, um, doing right now. Um, because CARES sunset it, it's, it's doing hamstring us on our, on our efforts. Um, there's a reason we're doing better than other communities, it's because we're putting a lot of effort into this. So, uh, it does concern me, Lynn and Paul and I have had a lot of conversations. I think we have some plans in the works for it, but, um, at some point, I am generally concerned about though.
Okay. Tom, just to quickly, uh, it appears that our quick read of, um, a summary document that was sent out this afternoon looks like they will extend the CARES Act. Um, not that there'll be more money for it necessarily, but that they will extend the expiration date. So that, that at least is some, um, support that we were not anticipating by the end of next week. But, um, I, I don't think we've identified additional money for local communities in that, um, yet. And I don't know, Paul, if you've looked at anything further.
I haven't seen, other than the document that you're referring to, Lynn, is the one that I saw also. Uh, it didn't say anything about additional money, but the good news is, is I don't think that, um, we've, are there, there's still, there's still money available in our first allotment, which was one point four million. Um, so I believe that we have a little cushion that'll carry us forward into the new calendar year. Um, we will be doing a reconciliation with, um, administration, the state administration finance, um, department later in January and we'd have a pretty good indication of where we stand with our excess funds at that point in time.
All right, well, thank you, because when we did the mass distribution at the high school, several people, you know, wanted to donate and if there was a specific need that we thought would be helpful to keep the town safer, we might even be open to looking for some donations. So I'd like you to keep that in mind, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, no other questions for Chief? We'll move on to announcements, Lynn?
Thanks. Um, so holiday trash collection, there's a reminder that, um, residents, uh, let's see. Sorry, I'm just reading while I'm trying to talk here. The DPW wants to remind residents that, uh, trash and recycling pickup will be one day late this year for households normally on a Friday. Collection for the weeks of December twenty first and December twenty eighth. Uh, again, this year, residents will be allowed one extra bag for the two-week period from Saturday, December twenty sixth through Saturday, January ninth. And call the DPW office at five six seven thirty-four hundred if you have questions or concerns. There's also recycling, uh, holiday recycling information posted on the town website. What to do with, um, gift bags, gift wrap, ribbon, things like that. You can refer to that information on longmeadow.org, longmeadowma.org. No, longmeadow.org, sorry. Um, and we have, um, town hall closing, um, office closings for the holidays, both this Friday and next Friday. The offices will be closed, uh, and that includes the satellite offices. And, uh, as people have seen, um, the cell tower is under construction on Bliss Road and information has been posted on the town website about that. And lastly, um, with last week's snow, I just want to remind people that is, it is their responsibility to clean the sidewalk adjacent to their property and their fire hydrants. And that is a town bylaw. Within twenty-four hours after the snow stops falling, they do need to clean those, um, sidewalks and those fire hydrants. So please, uh, be proactive in that. Uh, otherwise, we will, we will take a, an education approach at first, but if there are repeat addresses and repeat situations, um, we will, uh, utilize the finding, uh, mechanism in the bylaw. That's all I have for announcements tonight, Tom.
Okay, thank you. And so we will move to, uh, well, first I want to, Richard Foster, you're here with us now. Uh, do you want to just check in?
Yeah, yeah, Tom, I'm here.
Okay, I know you've been here, but you, you weren't able to speak for a while. So, thank you. And we'll go to, uh, resident comments. Do we have any resident comments? Anyone talk to you, Lynn?
I have not heard from anyone. Um, we do not have a chat function any longer, so if you do, um, want to say something, um, I think you have the ability to raise your hand.
If you go visual. But we have some folks that are just calling connections.
Okay, I don't, I don't see anyone.
Okay. Well, I'll have to, if there is a, a real need, you can always, um, you know, email the town manager. Uh, that might be another way to, to get on. But we can always come back to that. We've made some changes because last week we had some folks, our last meeting two weeks ago, uh, we had individuals who sort of broke into the meeting appropriately, so. Okay, the next thing would be select board comments. Um, any select board comments this evening? Uh, Mark, is that waiting?
Yeah, I was waiting, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I, I had, thanks to Lynn, Lynn sent out a note. And I, I had a chance to look at the, uh, watch the half hour or so of the East Long Meadow Town Council meeting where they discussed the intermunicipal agreement, uh, with Long Meadow and the, uh, on the Health Department, potential merger of the Health Department date, so everybody knows they voted against it, so I don't know. But it was interesting and I, I think it, my concern was that they inferred a lot of things that I don't think anybody in our side implied. And, and I just wanted to kind of go on the record as indicating that, at least from my perspective, the, the approach was really an opportunistic, uh, approach based on, you know, we had a chance where Beverly Hirschhorn was retiring. It's kind of once in a career situation where our director of our health department was retiring and there might have been opportunities to take, uh, or to pick up some efficiencies. And so we approached East Long Meadow and I think that, I just wanted to leave that impression rather than some of the things that may have been inferred by the folks at, at East Long Meadow, which I know isn't what we were implying. So that's, that's about my, my comments for the night.
Thank you. Any other select board comments? Okay, so we can go to...
Bobby?
Yeah?
I just wanted to publicly thank Chief Dearborn again and the Long Meadow Fire Department for bringing, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Claus to town, uh, yesterday. The kids absolutely loved it and it was a great pick-me-up, um, on a dismal Christmas season. So the kids loved it, they were thrilled, I can't thank you guys enough. Thank you so much.
Great.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Uh, so we lost count, but we were, we're estimating that we had around a thousand people, um, out on the streets. Um, it was not only a great pick-me-up for, uh, residents, but for my, my staff. Uh, we've been in a long marathon here and, uh, we really needed something positive and it felt good at the end of the day. So thank you very much for recognizing that.
All right. No other comments, we'll move to the town manager's report. And, or Lynn?
Thank you. Um, so the special town meeting was held on December ninth, uh, at eight AM at Greenwood Center. The quorum had been reduced to five registered voters and the quorum was reached. We had thirteen registered voters attend and the meeting was held as planned. A motion to take no action on articles one through twenty-three by consent was made and unanimously voted in favor of. Immediately after that, a motion to dissolve was made and unanimously approved and the meeting dissolved. This, um, thus eliminated the issue in setting the FY twenty twenty-one tax rate. Uh, the FY twenty-one tax rate has been set. It's been certified by Department of Revenue. The tax rate is twenty-four dollars and seventy-four cents, which is an increase of fifty-three cents over the FY twenty twenty-two tax rate. It's important to note that, uh, two dollars and thirty-eight cents of that twenty-four seventy-four, uh, is attributed to debt excluded, uh, debt exclusion projects, which are the Adult Center, DPW, High School, and Wolf Swamp Fields renovation. An update on Westcom, a purchase and sale agreement has been signed by Westcom for the purchase of the former Salter College in Chicopee. Um, financing for the purchase was approved by Monson Savings Bank and Westcom was approved for a state nine-one-one grant to cover the renovations of the property. The procurement process for the renovations is currently underway and a closing of, on the property will take place in early twenty twenty-one. Uh, the new DPW and Adult Center facilities are moving along. The DPW is expected to reach substantial completion in the next two weeks. A punch list of closeout items is being worked through and a plan to transition to the new buildings being developed. But the new move, the move won't happen, um, likely until the end of January, um, obviously that's weather permitting. And, uh, information will be publicized once it's confirmed. The Adult Center is also progressing right along and we are expecting to reach substantial completion early in twenty twenty-one. The satellite offices at the Community House will be closed on the upcoming Fridays, December twenty-fifth and January first. And a reduction in hours is being considered for the new year to assist with staffing levels, uh, in maintaining both offices in Town Hall and the Community House. New hours, uh, will be announced once they are finalized. And regarding, uh, Pride litigation, the Superior Court denied Pride's motion for summary judgment and allowed the town's motion for summary judgment in the constructive approval, uh, case. This was and is the last remaining case Pride had pending against the town. And in recent conversations, it appears that Pride will not appeal if the town agrees to not seek costs. Uh, this matter was discussed with Attorney Belcher Timmy and the legal costs were, um, looked at and, um, what we could recover would be fully absorbed if we were to have to fight an appeal. So if we agree to not seek costs now, no one spends any more money out of pocket and we all move on. So that is the, uh, direction we would go.
How much have we spent, Lynn?
Uh, I don't have that total in front of me right now, but I can certainly look it up and get back to you.
Okay. Any other questions on the town manager's report? Yes, Mark Gold?
Yeah, I, I have a cou- a couple of comments. Wanted, not to do specifically with the report, but amongst the things Lynn distributed to us, part of it was a capital plan and I spent a lot of time, because we had a fairly light agenda, I read through all the capital plan. And so I had a couple of quick comments about that and I don't know if it's for Lynn or for our capital planning committee. But one is that I noticed that we've, a couple of the water and sewer, uh, capital items were recommended to be split with, to, the split to include the sewer, uh, storm sewer utility. I saw Lynn took that out for most of those and it's now, instead of twenty-five, twenty-five percent for four different things, it's going to be still a fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, and I'd support that. But storm sewer utility really isn't, uh, a, a, a big revenue generator and it'd be, I think, a real burden to, to, to burden that, uh, utility with, or that fund with, with paying for a lot of capital. The other thing though, I, I just wanted to comment on is a lot of the requests for the DPW equipment didn't seem to account for the fact that, especially the long-term, longer-term projections, because there are four or five-year projections in it, didn't account for the fact that we're going to have a new facility that's going to have indoor storage of a lot of equipment and washing facilities and hopefully will, I mean, part of my personal justification for all this was, would be extending the life of a lot of that equipment. So I'm hoping that as we move forward with the capital plan, we recognize that a new facility, new way to equip and wash and take care of and store our, our, our major equipment of the DPW will extend that life. And I'd like to see that reflected a little bit there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I would just like to say, in terms of the, uh, the tax rate and, you know, the amount of money that we spent in addition to that for improvements to the town, you know, as I drive by Wolf Swamp Fields and they're doing the work on there, I just, I look forward to the day when that project is done. And when I would go to different sporting events, it was usually in the state of Connecticut that they had these just gorgeous fields, you know, and, and so, um, it's really going to be an asset to our community when, when people see those fields, you're going to really have a good feeling about the town. And, you know, it's expensive, it is expensive, but I, hopefully it'll, it'll pay back in terms of the, the property values going up. So that's about it for that. So, thank you. Let's move on to some old business. We have to approve our minutes from the December seventh meeting, kind of motion.
How will we approve the minutes of the December seventh meeting, Select Board?
Okay, second?
Second, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Deb, will you do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes?
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to do a few appointments here and, um, so I'm looking at how we might just do this. We have, on the Board of Health, we have several people who are applying for three positions. And so I was hoping we could do what I, I believe I should be able to share my screen. Let me try that. Uh, I'm disabled. Could you just, uh, allow me to share my screen, Lynn?
Yep, hold on one second.
All right.
All right, try that now, Tom, and see if that works.
Okay, good. Let's see, we start here. We're here, okay, we're in the right place now. Let's see. All right, so if you can see, what I have is the, the folks, the five people interviewed for the position, uh, Kimberly Gorman, Michelle Keenmore, Gregory Valenzin, Christine Beaumont, and Thomas Mira. And so here are their names here and we have the three terms. One is a full three-year term, one is a two-year term. one is a two-year term, six months, and then the others are a six-month term. They would go uh until May or June thirtieth. So what I was hoping people could do is just give us, you know, like a a vote of a one, two, and a three, your first choice, second, third, a third choice, and then we'll we'll add up and the folks with the lowest numbers, hopefully we'll have three folks that will sort themselves out. Does that sound okay to folks?
I'm following what you're asking for, Tom, as opposed to just motions to put people into positions.
Yeah, well, the thing is that I I think this way everyone on the board would have more input than if we just asked one person to identify three people. So that's why I wanted to do it this way. So if people would feel comfortable with that, I'm willing to go first. So so Deb, can you keep track of this? Can you see the board, what I have going here? Deb House?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, now my assumption, well, after we identify three candidates, we probably give the person with the lowest number the full three-year term and then move on from there, but we can discuss that as we go ahead. So the three folks, uh I would put down a a one for Michelle, um, a two for Greg, and a three for Christine. Okay? For the next person, Deb, if you can work through the board.
Okay. Uh, Mark Strange?
Uh, yeah, so I would, uh, using this format, I would um, I would have Michelle Keenmore one, uh Greg Velania two, Kimberly Berman three.
Steve?
Yeah, that, uh, Michelle Keenmore one, Christine Beaumont two, Greg three.
Mark Gold?
I'd have Greg Velania one, Michelle Keenmore two, and Kimberly Berman three.
And Richard?
Yeah, I have Christine one, Gregory two, Michelle three.
So we look at.
Okay.
And eight for Michelle, five, ten?
These people with zero votes get low numbers.
Or Greg? Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, we have, okay, so we're gonna have to go over the, yeah, the, um, so we have the most votes went for Michelle and Greg. And then Christine got three votes, which was a one, two, and three, and Kim had two threes. So that would make our temp candidates, uh Michelle, Greg, and Christine. Michelle coming in with the lowest scores, you know, in terms of three one votes and a three and a two, and Greg come with one-one vote and three twos. So can we have a motion? Or I'll make a motion to appoint uh Michelle to the three-year term, Greg to the two-year and six-month term, and Christine to the six-month term. You have a second for that, anyone?
I'll I'll second it for the purpose of discussion, but I I guess I don't follow it because I mean, Kimberly Berman Moore, but you know, by this count, she had two third-place votes.
Right.
So you're saying that that doesn't?
Well, I say Christina got a first place and a second place, and a third. So she had more voters in general than she had two lower voters. That's where I would be. And we hope she'll try again in the future. Any other discussion?
Tom, can I just clarify what you mean by each of the terms? Because we have an associate term here, we have a term that doesn't even start till January first.
Yes, um, so the uh the first, the three-year term is a full membership term, right?
Okay, the one expiring twenty twenty-three, I see that.
Yeah, or no, well, oh, yes, right, twenty twenty. Yeah, six thirty twenty-three, and then the associate term is a six-month.
That's a one-year.
Well, six twenty-one would just be this, that would be one, oh, it says one-year term, but expires in six months.
Right, um, but that one's always a one-year as opposed to the others, others that are full terms. It's associates a non-voting position.
Oh, I see, yeah, so then we would give the 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 full term for a top, the person who was identified most, which was Michelle, and the second the second one to the uh to Greg for full voting, and then the associate term would go to Christine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm glad you.
Can you just repeat that? So Greg is a three-year term expiring in the in twenty twenty-two. Michelle's a three-year term expiring twenty twenty-three, and Christine is a one-year term expiring in twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then uh so we just take a vote on this, um, Deb, you'll do roll call on the motion.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, great, now I just have to figure out how to give you guys a screen back, stop stop sharing, okay? And um so our our next on the agenda is we have also a person for the Cable Advisory Committee. We have a motion to appoint that individual, Graham Jesmer, the one-year associate term.
Still moved.
Okay, um, so Stephen Rance moved it as second. Bye.
Sorry.
Okay, Mark Strange, all right, um, any discussion? Okay, Debbie do roll call vote on that?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and congratulations to our new appointees. Now we go to the continuation of the water and sewer discussion, and we are going to hand it over to uh Richard Foster, who spent a lot of time working on this, he's distributed a a report to everyone on the board, that we could pull out and look at as he um makes a presentation, are you ready, Richard?
Yeah, Tom, I really wasn't um so concerned about making a presentation, Tom, is getting the information out to the board members. Because I I still strongly believe that we're gonna end up, you know, in January, so that Lynn's gonna put somebody together and we're gonna take all the informations being generated and sit down in a good room and and talk through the whole process. Uh, I did send out two pa- two different copies on this. Uh, the last one I sent out had been modified, they had the commercial water put in where the for for the other one was strictly residential. Uh, I guess if there's any questions, I would certainly entertain a question if anybody have it, but other than that, you know, it's way too much information to to go over and have any meaningful uh dialect with, because there's charts and graphs and everything else. So does that, anybody have any questions about what I put out, or since we're open to open discussion now, I guess you could email me tomorrow and ask too.
Stephen Rance?
I I have two comments, uh, one, Richard, uh, your quote was, our current system is very unfair to many users and it uh rewards heavy water users, and um that to me is, that's that's a big, it's a red flag, I think, you know, I I think conservation uh is number one, and so any system that rewards rewards heavy users, I think, I think we really that that has to be um uh definitely taken into account as this uh body meets whenever Lynn puts it together. And secondly, uh, the I and I thing, or apparently spending as much money on non-sewier water for sewage, um, just a question, in in your opinion, from what you've studied, um, it actually seems like leakage leakage is is not the problem, or is leakage a problem? Because actually, there are ways, uh, there are actually, and there may be actually cost-effective ways uh to um to to stop leakage, but I'm not sure leakage is the problem, it's more like water coming in as opposed to water going out.
Yeah, that that's true, we don't, we don't have too many ways of verifying what we're actually losing out of the system into the ground. Uh, what what seems to come back, and it's came back in the two thousand sixteen data also, is when you look at the graphs that show uh, you know, water use and sewage use, and and when your sewage is above your water use, it's coming from someplace, and the most obvious place is infiltration and inflow. Uh, we do have a couple of studies, maybe even three or four of them at this point, and I believe there's there either is a current study going on right now, or was just completed last year on I and I. I think by law, I I'm gonna speak up top, I had every seven, eight years, Paul, do you know how many years it is before we have to do the I and I studies?
I do not remember, I I know that certain intervals, I just don't remember the intervals.
Yeah, there there is an interval that's that the state mandates that we do the I and Is. I I think what is glaring is we know we have I and I problems because our community is so old. Uh, and and this last study I read, they identified up uh uh, you know, north of town, up where the older, older areas were, uh, some of the tests revealed there's a lot of uh downspouts that are still tied into the system, a lot of sump pumps. Uh, and 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 I think it's you would hope it's i- i- you would hope it's more of a of a debate, but it, when you look at the charts, it's not even really debatable, I mean, it's so obvious that's there. You know, especially during the winter time, when you get the peaks coming up, it's a normal I and I flow. And in the summer, when your flow is just absolutely nothing, and you see how heavy the sewage flow is during September and stuff like that, it's just, it just smacks that we got a lot of water coming in. Uh, I don't know which is bigger, i- i- Steve, I guess we get in the reports and see where they figured that the uh inflow was bigger or the uh um infiltration, but the, both of them, both of them are gonna uh capitalize on a system our size and our age. We could easily, more easily work, I think, on the inflow. That's a, that's a uh public education program in a, in a way of being able to reach out to customers, you know, you can put smoke in the sewage lines and you can see if it comes up to their downspouts and et cetera, so you can pretty well identify homes that have downspouts and all connected to their systems. Uh, i- it's a matter, it's a matter of getting out and getting it fixed. Now, to the credit of the DPW and the Wastewater Division, they have been consistently improving on this each year. Uh, I didn't put in a graph that goes back six or seven years, but there's been a noticeable improvement in the amount of I and I we have, so every new water line or every new sewage line that we put in, we're we're heading towards um, I can't say a hundred percent, because I don't think we'll ever get there, but we're still going in the right direction, but I just wanted to, it's something that we haven't talked about on the boards, I wanted to introduce it. Uh, now, by the way, I have not shared this information, the current report with Pete and the guys down there, so they may have some uh comments to make, but but it's a well-known fact that I and I across the country is a major problem on sewage systems.
Any other questions? I, you know, I know, Richard, when uh Pete Thurgood's been here, he's he's addressed that issue and um so we can always hear from him again, I know he didn't seem to think that that was, is, well, it was gonna take a lot of work if you were to track down everybody's sump pump and and uh downspout that connected in, and I don't know if it'd be worth it. But one of the questions I had, in using this sort of a system, would you would it be the kind of thing where people would come forward and say, the year, or I'm wanna use winter averaging because I use a lot of water? How would it roll out? Would this be general to everybody in town?
Yeah, Tom, when you, when you read what other communities have done across America, they they pretty well blanketed it in for all accounts. Uh, and then, like Mark and I talked, there's a lot of exceptions, I mean, there's there's people that don't have any flow during the during the winter that they they go to Florida, a- and they found ways to deal with this, they do an averaging on those people, you know, of of similar households. So there's a, there's a lot of ammunition or a lot of background research to to show how they implement. Uh, somebody had said, I read the article, and I don't know what they're doing, but West Springfield apparently had also been investigating uh going winter averaging. And and I don't know if they've uh, if they've uh moved forward with it or not. Uh, apparently it's something, Tom, as far as I can determine, it is not is not widely used if it's used at a- at any place across the Commonwealth. Uh, for some reason, the Massachusetts is just, doesn't seem to be part of this puzzle, and I, and I don't, I can't answer why. Because i- it's across the country, if you look at the internet, I mean, use major cities like San Francisco and all, I mean, some of these major cities use this process, it's uh it's pretty well accepted to be, it's not squeaky-clean accurate, but it's a reasonably accurate way of determining sewage flow. And and you see with some of the charts I showed, it's very obvious in our town, when you do have somebody that has an irrigation system, then you look at how much water they're using in the winter, and it's almost a straight line. Uh, the two graphs I showed, of course, I cherry picked to get two graphs that really did show this fact very strongly. Uh, but as I say, there's many of them that show the similar ones.
Okay, all right, so then uh because I know it's come up before that some folks might, um, you know, if if we have less, if people are paying less for their sewer bill, then it just incurs a greater cost for the, for all the other folks who are using the sews sewers, so we'd have to address that in that committee, but um.
Right. I get, I, I guess the one, one, the one thing you can say, and you know, Mark and I've talked about this, if if every customer that could benefit possibly from having a meter put in, put a meter in, you would likely have, generally speaking, the same impact as if you went winter averaging. The only benefit that there is with the winter averaging method is that you can actually convert every household at once. And and it's gonna have to be looked at, because our rates have got so disproportionate to the use on some people because of the way we bill up to two-twenty, and and then we don't bill any ever, anything after, and I think the one emphasis I had in there is one customer is eight hundred and some units. And it looks like they, if you use, if you look at the winter averaging on them, they should be paying for close to eight hundred units of sewage, and they're only paying for two-twenty. Because their usage is almost identical for every single month of the year, right across, it it's an amazing uh, I don't know what they're using water for, I can't even imagine, that is a massive amount of water. But there's there's hardly any drip whatsoever in in the winter, and and you know, Mark has seen it, and I've seen it, when you look at all these charts, it, they're all over the place. Uh, but we've become so, I I guess we're, I don't wanna say distorted, because we've been using this for a long while, but the current method, if you looked at the database and looked in winter averaging, there's a tremendous amount of people that wouldn't even get close to having two hundred and twenty units of sewage that are actually paying for that much right now. So we've got a lot of customers overpaying, and then we got a lot of customers underpaying because of that that arbitrary two-twenty figure. Uh, by the way, I think you had in the report, that figure has gone from like a hundred and ten to three hundred over the years, it's been, it's gone back and forth. Uh, people have looked at it and they've changed it all over the place. Uh, the only thing that we we did one time in Long Meadow, we, apparently we marked like it was around when it happened, they experimented with a tiered water rate, and apparently it did not go over well. Uh, but cured water rates are.
Two weeks.
Oh, yeah, it was a shock therapy, but cured water rates across the country are 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 very well-used and uh seem to be an ideal way for high-use people. It it's used all all across, but up here, it it all blew up overnight because it was such a radical change to some of the people and how they've been using water.
And Richard, the only thing is, there are a lot of folks who don't have any kind of a irrigation system, and the amount of water they use to to keep their lawns green is just enough to keep from turning brown perhaps, and why would they even care about this? I mean, would they, would there be any advantage to them to to be included in a program like this, or would they be better off just not even being part of a program like this?
Well, see, Tom, if if that was a true case, if you did not use any water to water your yard or a garden or anything like that, no, there'd be no benefit, there'd be no benefit whatsoever to you. Because you're you're, that's why we, why I had the figure in there that talked about if we put the irrigation meter in, some people get a two-year payback, and there were some of them, like, and they only save ten cents a year when you look at the stats, I mean, it 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 costs them two hundred years to get a meter back, so, yeah, there's a lot of people that would not benefit, period, from a water meter.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Steve Marantz, did you have a question?
I, I had one other comment about, one of the discussions we had earlier, uh, in this term was, uh, it looks like the city of Springfield's gonna build this eighty-million-dollar new filtration plant. Now, in terms of what's gonna affect our water rates, that could be more significant than anything else, and so if this committee, or whatever this test was, I mean, I know you sent a letter, and I assume we've had no response from anybody about Long Meadow having a say in this eighty-million-dollar facility that Springfield wants to build, I think we really want to, um, I think we want to impose ourselves on this, because thi- this is all part, this, it's all part of the same system, and I think that this should not be ignored as we go forward.
It, it's a good point, Steve, because, but do remember, we are sort of at the disposal, because we buy our water, and we pay to have our sewage treated. We no longer have the capabilities of doing either of those in-house. Uh, and they're having the same problems we have, but they have a way to pass the cost on for infrastructure improvements, and that is to the end-users.
Okay, so yes, and, and also, you know, we never did hear anything back about, um, letting us be part of any kind of a discussion about, um, you know, the, the, the way they're going to clear, clean the water, and where the direction they're going into, as far as, um, that huge facility in Springfield that's gonna be built.
You may, we, we, you may wanna remind them, saying, you know, we're, we're still looking for a response, though.
Yeah.
Can't hurt, I mean, the squeaky wheel does get the grease.
Yeah.
On occasion.
All right.
Mark's got his hand up.
Tom, can I just make a couple of comments?
Sure.
So, a couple of things to keep in mind, and, and that is that, you know, I think we're committed to, and I think we need to, keep our water and our sewer u- uh, utility funds revenue-neutral, that is, the cost, the revenue has to meet, meet the costs, and there's, from year to year, there's some variations, because we set the fees at the beginning of the year, you never know how much water people are gonna use, so some years we do bring in a little bit more water, more money than we put out, but overall, it, it averages out, and so, you know, and I say that because we have to understand that if we're gonna be revenue-neutral, that means for everybody who pays less, somebody else pays more. You know, and maybe it's for everybody who pays less, multiple people pay more, and sometimes it's for everybody, buddy, you know, five people who pay less, only one person pays more. But, you know, there's gonna be changes if you make changes to the system, and I think people need to understand that. It's gonna be the rare person who's, you know, doesn't see, no matter if you make any changes at all, be a rare user who doesn't see a change to their cost. The second thing I just wanted to mention is this issue of the two hundred and twenty unit limit, and you know, what happens with, you know, people who don't put in meters. To some degree, that system addresses the tiered water system rate, because it means that for people who use water for irrigation, they're paying for it more. They're paying not only for the water, but they're paying money into another enterprise fund, into our sewer enterprise fund, and so, you know, in, in terms of, if, if the goal is a social engineering goal to encourage conservation or less water usage, then having an additional fee tied to that water accomplishes the goal of telling people, you know, watering your lawn is, is not just a cost of the water, there's a, there's a secondary cost to it. And, not that I'm trying to impose it, not that I, I support it so much, but just to understand that, that, that's one of the reasons why, you know, there's sewer fees attached to it. Uh, the, the issue for me really does come down to, you know, what is the, what is that fair cap level? It, you know, two hundred and twenty, I have no idea how it was set, it's been manipulated. You know, Richard and I have both taken a long, hard look at the data. There is no sense at all about two-twenty, there's no percentage, there's no, you know, we could just as easily change that to do some adjusting of costs as, as, as anything else. And I just wanted people to understand that there was no magic system that says, gee, you know, the average user, you know, shouldn't use more than two hundred, two hundred and twenty units of water to water their, their lawn. So that's not a magic number, I think it's, can potentially be subject to re- review as well, and I think we, if we're gonna throw something in the, in, in the mix, that ought to be another consideration, but I just wanna keep people primarily in mind that for every person whose fees go up, somebody, or every person whose fees go down, somebody else's fees are gonna go up.
All right.
Yeah, one, one quick thing, Tom, and I'll shut up. Uh, because I had it in there from July on, I didn't have the water figures. I, I have seen the figures, the, the amount of water that we sold from July forward is unbelievable this year, with as dry as it was. And what you have to remember is, there was a tremendous amount of people uh, that normally would not even come close to that two-twenty cap on sewage. Actually, if they ran irrigation, they ran right up over it this year. So there was a tremendous amount more revenue other than what was forecast that went into the sewage account this year. Now, it's gonna be used, it's not wasted money, but that's what you see with, with, with having those two that are linked into the water, the water drives the sewage. So they're not independent the way they should be, they're, they're, they're kinda tacking on together, and you know, Mark and I talked about the revenues that came in this year on sewage, i- i- if, when we finally get the stats, it's likely gonna be phenomenal because of the dry, dry, dry summer we had.
Like you said, Richard, what we're gonna end up doing is funding a couple of capital sewer projects directly out of the retained earnings, as opposed to, or out of the, that fund, rather than having to bond it, because the fund's gonna be over, oversubscribed at this point.
Yeah, tha- that's true, the, the money will not be wasted, I think we can assure everybody of that.
And it goes back to the sewer.
Yeah, but the fact is, you know, Mark, we've often said here that we don't tax people just to, to put money in funds either, so there's, there's two sides to that coin. Anyway, Tom, tha- that, that's all I have, we'll, we'll just, so hopefully we get a committee going, and we all get our heads around this, and come up with something mid near, mid-year next year.
Okay, well, great, well, thanks for your work and presenting tonight, uh, even though you didn't make a formal presentation, but we'll look forward to what the committee will have to say in, uh, in our next discussion, thank you. Okay, so our next agenda item is the, uh, is looking at our its new business, and I'm gonna share my screen here, and it, so does that show up? Everyone see the? So it looks at the, the Luga for Mario Maza, right? Everyone see this? Okay, see, it's been head-shaking. So, basically, it's pretty straightforward, that they, the fee for the annual sticker will remain the same, uh, forty-five for household, thirty-five for seniors over sixty-five. And then there's some discussion, and then there's a proposal, so there's really only three changes to this, these fees, and it has to do with televisions, uh, seventeen inches and up, I guess that's right, and, uh, computer monitors, and, um, and then sleeper sofas. So, I don't know what people feel about this, um, the only thing I had comments, the sleeper sofa for forty dollars, when I look at, you can bring a, an SUV or van load of construction debris for forty dollars, and you can, and then you look at a sleeper sofa that, uh, I would think that price could probably be, you know, in a more reasonable range. You know, maybe if a regular couch is twenty-five, if we did, you know, thirty, or if thirty-five at the most, I, that's my only comment. Uh, I don't know what other people have, any opinions on the fees?
Um, I think the issue with the sleeper sofa is that the actual cost of disposal is more expensive, if you have a station load of wood, the wood gets chipped up, and it's cheap to, for us to dispose it, but a sleeper sofa, people have to take it apart, there's metal, there's fabric, there's a bunch of other stuff. I think these costs reflect the actual costs of, of us disposing it, and not necessarily us just trying to gouge people bringing stuff in.
Yeah, but of course, like you say, there's metal, and, and the metal, we do get money back for metal.
But, but it's not pure metal, you gotta take it apart. That's the problem, it's, it's, there's labor, intense labor to, to, to get down to the recyclable parts in a sleeper sofa.
I guess I'd volunteer to go down with a sledgehammer. What? Okay, any other comments on these fees?
I'll make a motion to adopt the fees as recommended.
Second, and a seconded, okay, any further discussion? All right, Deb, roll call and vote?
Um?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, so that brings us to the end of our, um, meeting. So, uh, thank you very much for, those of you who are watching, and thank you for the select boards for your participation, and, uh, I wish everyone a happy holiday season, I know it's not a typical season, we're mostly spending a lot of time, we reduce family gatherings and get alone, and, um, and it's, I know it's hard on my family, and I I'm gonna try to make the, the most of it, and I hope that all of the folks watching and the other members of the select board have a wonderful holiday season. So, with that, I'd look for a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Police, not be done.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. We'll do no problem, we'll see you guys all in January. Deb?
Um?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, and good night.
Hey, thanks.